Again, welcome. I'd like to call the media to order I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Uh, tonight we have two, three, four, five, six, seven public hearings. Um, if you would like to address the council in regards to any of these public hearing items as they come up, please approach the podium and give your name and address for the record. Um, this time and place for a public hearing is advertised on a matter of Resolution sixteen dash two forty-three, approving the urban revitalization plan for Bluffs Northway Urban Revitalization Area Amendment, URV dash sixteen dash double oh four, is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing, uh, what's the council's pleasure? And second, have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on a matter of Resolution sixteen dash two forty-four, approving the plan specification form of contract and cost estimate for the ninth and tenth street bridges over Indian Creek Project, fiscal year fifteen dash nineteen, is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to talk to the council in regards to this matter? What is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on a matter of Resolution sixteen dash two forty-five, approving the right-of-way authorization in connection with the West Broadway Reconstruction Project Phase One, is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on a matter of Resolution sixteen dash two forty-six, approving right-of-way authorization in connection with the East Beltway Project, is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter?
If you want to just come up here to the podium and give your name and address.
Can we do it one at a time ladies, or do you want to do it together?
Whatever you like.
We prefer one at a time because we need to keep.
Right, so if I forget something, just, yeah.
Perfect.
We're neighbors.
Okay. You're the spokesman.
Well, I, yep, yes. I guess so. But they'll chime in if I, if I forget something. I'm Kathy Reekin-Gutsholz. I live at five four zero two Taggart Circle in the Hills of Cedar Creek Edition. And we have, in our neighborhood, in the Hills of Cedar Creek neighborhood, we have been quite alarmed and made several calls to different audi- different city offices about some stakes that have been placed around, and we believe this is part of the, um, easement temporary, and then the paper said possibly permanent easement needed to build the road that's going right beside our property.
I don't believe that's the case, but
That's not it.
I don't know what they've told you, but
Well, we've got a lot of different
The phase that goes through Hills of Cedar Creek is complete, and so.
So what about the new road that they're building?
Well, it would be from the airport to the top of the Hills of Cedar Creek, and then we'll start at the bottom of the Hills of Cedar Creek and go to Highway ninety-two.
That's where we are.
So you're not in the Hills of Cedar Creek?
We are in the Hills of Cedar Creek, but we're, here comes Linda, she's got the map in her.
Alright.
This is Linda.
Linda, you gotta give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Linda Hunter, fifty-four oh six Taggart Circle. We're neighbors. The, the problem is, is that we're at the very top of Taggart Circle, which is where the Hills of Cedar Creek ends.
Okay.
Our property is parallel to where this new road is going. And we've gotten a lot of, of, uh, different comments, like Kathy said, from different city employees. We're trying to figure out whether, I mean, there's supposed to be some kind of a sidewalk which is right on the property. We have trees there, we're wondering if they're gonna get taken. We, we just don't have enough information, and we're afraid that if we don't say something now,
Right.
it's, they're just gonna come in and do whatever. So, um,
That's fine. She's got the map in her head.
You know, so it's kind of, and, and the road's fine. We have no problem with the road. I mean, that, that's all fine and good. And we have a secondary issue that really has nothing to do with tonight, but it's the property in the cornfield that's been zoned commercial right behind us. But that's probably another time, another place.
Can you give me a call tomorrow and I'll, I'll get you an answer?
Thank you very much.
We'll get you an answer, so I, my sense is that, you know, when we do this, we, um, wouldn't acquire, will acquire some right-of-way in, in some cases, but I think that area maybe was platted that way, but I don't know that for a fact, so.
It, all the eastern hills up to where it dead ends, I believe the way that that was platted included the plan for the East Beltway.
Yeah.
So I don't believe that if there's stakes going up, it could be for control or anything else as they're working through there, but.
But I'll get you the correct answer rather than sitting and guess, so. And this, uh, um, Mr. Ringenberg asked about this last time, and this is just a formality. It really is not, um, that this required because we're using federal funds and notice to the affected party, so. Yeah. Won't be the case, but. Yeah. No, we don't, we don't want you to move, so. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I, I think when they.
Good, good to hear. And, and as was discussed at, at the last, uh, council meeting when we, when we talked about this, uh, actually during the study session, it was pointed out that part of this process, this is all part of the, as the mayor pointed out, is kind of a bureaucratic process that, that we have to go through with the state in order to proceed with this sort of project. And part of this process is, this now triggers the city to enter into, if you will, negotiations or discussions with individual landowners. So, so the level of, and reliability of information ought to be going up. And, and if it doesn't, you did exactly the right thing by coming in and, and, and asking, and that's, that's how things are, are supposed to work. And, and if you don't get that level of good communication and clarity, you know, ke- keep at us.
I know someone who knows someone. I'll find out for you. Alright. I'll get back to you. Just give me a call tomorrow, no? Alright, anyone else? Do we have a motion? I believe we do. Do we, is there a motion? Anyone else, I guess, wishing to speak to the council? Is there a motion from the council?
I'll move.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for Resolution sixteen dash two forty-seven, authorizing disposal of city property legally described as Lot Ten, all dying court, um, is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on a matter of Resolution sixteen dash two forty-eight, authorizing disposal of city property legally described as the south half of Lots One and Two and the east twenty feet, the south sixty-five feet of Lot Three, Block Five, Rights Edition, is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on a matter of Resolution sixteen dash two forty-nine, which grants an underground electrical easement to the Mid-America, from, to Mid-America Energy in support of the field house at the Mid-America Center, is proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordnance is on first Street, sixty-two eighty, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section fifteen point zero two, point zero seven zero, by rezoning lots one through six, block six, street subdivision, and a vacated alley adjacent from R-two family residential district to R-three low-density multifamily residential district as defined in chapter fifteen point one zero, and setting up public hearing for October tenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven P.M.
Move the ordinance and set public hearing for October tenth, two thousand sixteen.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordnance sixty-two eighty-one, establishing the Bluffs Northway Urban Revitalization Area Amendment within the City of Council Bluffs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordnance sixty-two eighty-two, amending Title Five Sewer by amending Sections five point zero five, point zero one zero definitions, five point one zero, point zero four zero specific pollutant limitations, five point one zero, point zero eight zero accidental discharge slug control, and five point one zero, point one two zero reporting requirements for industrial uses.
Motion to approve.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution sixteen dash two five zero, to apply a planned residential overlay and adopt the associated development plan for West Broadway Village on property legally described as Block Twelve, Bryan and Clark subdivision.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I will be abstaining on this, uh, as my company, or my husband's company has this project.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry.
Ted?
Aye.
Ringenberg?
Aye.
Sandell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
White?
Epstein.
Resolution sixteen dash two five one, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Valley Corporation in connection with the levy certification in geotechnical MR seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations.
Motion to approve seven A and B inclusive.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens requesting to be heard?
None received.
Um, anyone from the audience like to address the council, uh, again, the same, um, policy and procedure, step to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Since it's not a public hearing, you'll be limited to five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Shayla Richardson, and I live at four oh one Spencer Avenue here in town. I just wanted to make a couple points, that since we were here last year, about the same time, there have been some notable changes. First of all, Utah became the nineteenth state to overturn its pit bull ban. That's what, that's what I'm talking about. Um, Arizona became the twentieth state in January of this year. Um, I would also like to add that our neighboring states of Minnesota and South Dakota have now enacted laws that prohibit dog bans as well. On a more local level, Carter Lake voted to amend their ban last October. So now both of our sister cities of Omaha and Carter Lake allow pit bulls with certain regulations. These regulations include secured fencing, liability insurance, spaying and neutering, microchipping, muzzling. So if our sister cities allow these dogs with certain guidelines, are we saying that they are in the wrong? As a community, we need to ask ourselves, one, are breed discriminatory laws a rational public safety response to dogs? Number two, what are effective approaches to reckless owners and dangerous dogs? Times do change, as you know. Eleven years ago, many lives were impacted, sadly impacted also by this ban. Looking at the dog bite statistics since then, we have remained pretty consistent with our numbers. I have all of the bite numbers. Um, two thousand and fifteen, we're still at ninety-six. It seems that many lives, including the pit bulls that are living now in local shelters and those that won't be allowed, a chance that a happy life could be impacted in a positive way, if only our ban was amended. We have visited with many people in our community who agree with that this ban is ineffective in preventing dog bites and has only caused sadness, a sense of loss and longing. Finally, I would like to read a letter from a local veterinarian who is supportive of our cause, cause as well. And this is from a house call veterinarian named Mark Peters, DVM. Says, "I have felt for many years that the laws in Council Bluffs pertaining to pit bulls are unreasonably harsh. In thirty-three years of practice, I have treated hundreds of pit bulls and encountered them, very few, in them, very few temperament problems. I support changing the current Council Bluffs ordinance to one similar or identical to that that applies in the City of Omaha. The Nebraska Humane Society is an extremely circumspect organization, and if it's good enough for them, I'm certain it will serve the health and welfare of the citizens of Council Bluffs just as well, respectfully yours, Mark Peters." I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Name is Al Ruby, five thirteen North Twenty-seventh Street. I'm out here about pit bulls. What I am here about is a council member. Um, the issues we've got, I'm with the Kinsel Riders Honor Guard. We've done a hundred eighty-seven funerals since we've started this group. We're a nonprofit organization. Everybody in our group gives one hundred and ten percent for what we do. We don't receive money. Everything we buy is out of our own pockets. The mayor's office has had a lot of phone calls about our group. And it needs to stop. The person I'm addressing, first of all, I want to, I want to apologize to, to, uh, Councilman Sandell, if there was anything we've done, any way, shape, or form, we apologize. Just not have been to take or degrade any way whatsoever. Councilman Ringenberg, you are the one. Since we've started this group, we had thought that, that you were behind military people, when in fact you were not. You, Ben Weiss, Brad Powell, the Legion members, opposed to, have done nothing but degrade, knock, and tear us down. We have people that we've talked to, that you've been around, that you've made statements to, that are outright. We feel that, number one, you're a council member, and you need to be negative, or, excuse me, you need to be neutral in everything that goes on with the military groups around here, instead of taking sides, and you have not done that. We have people in our, in our group that have a relation that you've been around and made statements to. We've had people get, um, call the mayor's office and make statements to the mayor, and he's tired of it. This needs to stop. Brad Powell, you, and Weiss, and some of the others, the Legion members, the, uh, post commander and the vice commander of the Legion, need to understand that we're tired of it. And if this continues, then you're gonna need to get an attorney. Because of slander, the degradation of everything that you guys have done to us hurts. We're all veterans. Nobody's against anybody. We're all supposed to be number one. As a one, not as a dozen, but one unit, and this has not happened. We have guys here that served in Vietnam. We've got guys in our group that were, um, uh, tunnel rats. We've got guys in our group that are lucky to be alive today. We got guys in our group that are struggling with Agent Orange, but they go every time, um, uh, a funeral calls us, where they do our job. We've never asked anything in return, and we never will. The only thing we get out of that is a thank you, and that's more than anybody could ever give us. And we don't charge for what we do, but we're hurting because of people like you. And you can say whatever you want, but when you denied me in a meeting because you and five other members of that board, we're all together in a little clique, that's where the straw broke the camel's back. You need to think hard about what you're doing and what you're saying.
Was, was any of that made public?
Excuse me?
Were, were any statements at that meeting?
Yeah, the statements were made public. I'm not gonna give you the names, but I will tell you one thing, that one of the guys in your little clique group made a statement that the Kinsel Riders Honor Guard was not welcome in the, in the Veterans Day Parade.
But I didn't say that, did I?
You're with the group when it was said. I'm not gonna, I'm not here to argue with you.
I did not.
I don't hear what you have to say. I'm just telling you what happened. You and your group created an issue. Now, you guys are gonna have to live with it. You opened a can of worms. Now we're gonna see if you guys can eat it. It's wrong for the way you treat us. I can't understand. You set my home, and you told me a lot of things. And I believed it, and then all of a sudden, you know what? Your word ain't worth fifteen cents for the way you've treated us and other council members here. But I'm not gonna get into that. I'm getting into what you've done to the Kinsel Riders Honor Guard. What have these guys done to you? Not one thing. We've done nothing but do funerals. We've done everything. The funeral homes have asked us, and our sponsors have asked us. I've come and I've sat in the mayor's office many a times, and I've had discussions, which way to go with this, have I not, Mayor? Not knowing which way to go, which, what to do, what to say to our guys. And the more you guys knock us, the more you guys degrade us, and the more you tear us down, we're gonna keep fighting. And we're not gonna stop doing what we're doing. You know why? Because there's more than just you there that creates the issue. And we understand that, but you know what? We're strong in what we're doing, and we're gonna stay strong.
It was you guys.
Who was my guys?
But you, you said you guys, and?
You, Brad Powell, Weiss. Weiss has called the office, I don't know how many times. Brad Powell has called the office, I don't know how many times. You know what they tried to do to us today? I'm gonna tell you what they tried to do. The patch that we have on our back signifies every military group in the United States. Brad Powell contacted the Navy and said, "They can't wear that." Well, there is a rule that says we can't wear that. We didn't know that. Now we may have to, to change our patch, which my brother had designed and passed away. That patch means a lot to us. We just don't serve one, we serve them all.
Okay, Al, that's, that's five minutes.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Patricia Lawson, thirty-eight Delman Drive, Council Bluffs. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I want to let you know, I was born and raised in Council Bluffs, and I've never left. And my husband and I are two of the fa- one of the families that was asked to leave our home at Colonial Plaza. And, um, it breaks our heart. This was our forever home. And I just want to sincerely thank you for listening and giving us suggestions on how to handle this travesty that's going on in Council Bluffs, and called Colonial Plaza. I'm moving, but not by choice. But I'd like to know, what about the remaining residents who are not part of the favored ones? Is there anything that can be done to help them? It seems like for every step forward we make, we get setback three more. What can we do as registered voters of Iowa to stop this kind of treatment? There has to be something, somewhere, that can be done to put a stop to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Teresa Jacoby. Not that you haven't seen me here before, but, um, I'm here to talk, not like I did about what's wrong, what the problem is, what's going on. I'm here to tell you what we need, what we want, and what we deserve at thirty-eight Delman. Judith Garnos Hightank, I can hardly say that. I just have to think. You stink, but then I remember what it says, so, you know. Not, my people don't think that I am humorous or anything. Anyway, uh, what we need, you folks, and the city hall has been, everybody has been very working hard on this, but nothing can happen in the sense that it takes the, uh, the building division, uh, time, and they have a time limit where Judith has to say what she has accomplished in doing to correct the problems. You might notice some, uh, pictures on your, on your thing to show you, those are the kinds of things that are, and you can pass them around when you're done or whatever, those are the kinds of things we have to deal with in the basement and many, many other things in, uh, in the apartment complex. So, uh, the city has cooperated. The Department of Human Services, uh, Connections, and, uh, another one, uh, we've gone through the whole thing with them, and they said, "Well, uh, all we can do is, uh, tell you to call the police." What can the police do? Oh, well, this is elder abuse. Yeah, we're all getting evicted one at a time, but this is, what we wanna talk about now is elder abuse. So anyway, um, the officer came up, his name was Jeff Anderson, and he came in and said, "This is, this is a civil matter. This isn't a police matter, so this isn't really, you know, applied to us." Um, and so we talked about a lot of things, and, uh, I said, "Would you like to take a tour down and see what's going on?" So he came downstairs, and he looked at the stuff, the stuff that you're seeing in the pictures, and he talked to a couple of people down there, and, uh, he got just red in the face. I said, "How would you like it if your mother lived here?" And, um, and he said, "I wouldn't like this very well at all," but he said, "You know, uh, I need to refer you to the par officers," you know? And, um, by the way, the social services, uh, their solution was that we go to the federally funded elder abuse money that's available on the national level. And so, um, and so we attempted to do that, uh, but it's a national one-eight-hundred number. We haven't received anybody calling back about that, but that was their solution to it. Um, what we need, what we want, what we deserve is safe, clean environment. No plumbing issues with dignity of words and actions of Judith Garnos Hightank to, to, um, treat us as equals and human beings and not little children that she needs to scream and holler at. Not to be intimidated, not to be harassed, and no yelling or shouting or pushing. You treat us with respect, and we will treat her with respect. No looking down at us. Treat us as equals. Do not be holier-than-thou because you say that you are an attorney, but that's yet to been verified, because as an attorney, I think, Nate, isn't this true? You have to keep up your, uh, keep up your training and learning?
That, that is true, yeah. Excuse me, there's continuing requirements to keep your license, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Why can we no longer use the community room downstairs for socializations such as potlucks and Christmas programs? and Christmas programs, et cetera, et cetera, as well as the other holidays? A functional maintenance person and a property manager is what we would like.
Okay, so that's five minutes.
Okay, and emergency, an emergency number to call. There are 40 apartments, she gets $40,000 a month in order to maintain that property, and she has failed to pay that. Is that correct?
I honestly don't have an update, but I would think that that maybe is correct. They have done rental inspection, it's been up there, they've identified things that do need to be fixed. My understanding is they're in the process of fixing those things. My understanding also is that they, because of the fact that that community room is in the basement, isn't sprinkled, the city told them they couldn't have people there, they were concerned about a fire hazard issue, so...
So, that, I know the city's been working on it. Maureen told us today that she had requested, she had requested for Judith to give a report so we would know that, because the 31 days is up, and she hasn't heard from Judith yet. But as far as we know, they have fixed four of the 40 fire things underneath the sink, and they have fixed one door and my door lock.
Teresa, have any of the residents been able to get, I know you talked before about an attorney, particularly if some of them might qualify for legal aid, or has there been any luck? Because I think, in fairness...
Five attorneys.
Okay, and you don't want to say what they told you, because you have a right not to...
You know what? You said that before, but I personally am waiting for Judith to give me a court date so I can address my issue. And Mike, the legal aid attorney, Mike Turras, he told me that because I came to the city council, I mean, well, I came to talk to the city council, but because I went to the Building Division and asked them to come down and investigate it, he gave me the legal aid book, and in there, page 21, it says, "This is retaliation," and that's what Mike said. But he can't, but he can't, he can't work with me on account of my assets.
Yeah, and let's talk a little bit afterwards, okay?
Okay, let's do that. Yeah, Clarence Meldrum, Marty Norenstern, Anthony Talkey, Deb Peterson, Amanda Heims, Dean Jennings, a wonderful attorney.
All good attorneys, actually.
All good attorneys. None of them could accept me because of other complications, but I'll tell you that Dean Jennings and all the attorneys can give you like 30 minutes of information.
Many do, many do.
Yeah, they do.
As a public service, not everybody, but many do.
Yeah, well, and after I went to my shrink a few, a week or so back, I went to see Dean Jennings, and Dean Jennings, it was at 3:30, he talked to me until after 5 o'clock.
He's a very good man.
I'm going to let you talk to Nate afterwards.
I need to make a motion to receive and file the photos that were given to us.
Motion to receive and file the photos. Is there any discussion?
Teresa, did you want us to keep a copy of these for the record, or did you want them back?
Um, can, that's my only copy. Could you go over them and get them back? Because I didn't take all those, other people have.
Yeah, are we going to keep just one set of them?
I think we might have slightly different ones. Maybe, maybe...
Oh, okay.
Well, if you'd like them to be a part of the record, what we could do is we could ask the city clerk to scan them in and then give you, then you could pick up the old, or excuse me, the original copies. Okay. Then I guess we have our motion then.
We have a motion, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Okay.
My name is Patricia Fuller, 26 Pickard Lane, Council Bluffs. I'd like to bring this back to the pit bull ban. This is another letter from a local veterinarian, Kevin Dobish, DVM. He writes, "To whom it may concern, I am writing to advocate against legislation imposing a breed-specific ban on pit bull terriers or any other breed to address the issue of dangerous dogs and dog attacks. As you, as I know you are aware, the issue of dangerous dogs, dog bites, and public safety is a complex one. There are no easy answers to this complicated situation. There are available on which breed accounts for dog bites and attacks are often inconsistent or incomplete, and therefore of little or no use in guiding local communities on how best to deal with dangerous dog issues. A dog tendency, a dog's tendency to bite depends on at least six interacting factors: Hereditary, early experience, socialization and training, physical and behavior health, including spay and neuter status, affective behavior and environment. Breed-specific patches do not address five of the six, and are not likely to result in effective injury control. The American Veterinary Medical Association recommends the following strategies to prevent dog bite injuries: Number one, enforcement of generic non-breed-specific dangerous dog laws, with an emphasis on chronically irresponsible owners; enforcement of animal control ordinances such as leash laws; prohibition of dogfighting; encouraging neutering; school-based and adult education programs that teach pet selection strategies, pet care and responsibility, and bite prevention. In my opinion, the answer comes down to socialization, sterilization, and supervision. Statistics show that 80% of dog bites are committed by intact male dogs. Surviving strong community support for low-cost spay and neuter programs, same as to that provided by the Nebraska Humane Society, would prove more thoughtful and less contentious to than breed-specific legislation. All of us veterinarians, government leaders, and citizens must continue our work to provide community support and educate the public on responsible dog ownership. Thank you for your careful consideration of this issue. Sincerely, Kevin Dobish, DVM." I also would like to add that, you know, why deny us the dog or the specific breed when typically the owner is the one who's to blame, who's responsible for controlling it? Maybe we could add another level of safety by making sure that these dogs have attended one of these behavior modification courses before they are allowed to be out, like with the pretty stringent laws Nebraska has, as far, or Omaha has, as far as the muzzling and the leashes and the neutering and the fences and the extra liability. I think there's many safety issues or factors you could build into to make this a safer situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sue Youngman. I'm at 14 Leeson Avenue, Council Bluffs, Iowa. I am here to oppose the CB ban on breed-specific dogs. We don't ask for much tonight, really. We only ask to be like our sister cities, Omaha and Carter Lake. There are 26 professional groups that support non-breed, non-breed things. I'm not getting this very good. But there's 26 of them, and I'm just going to list a few of them. The American Bar Association, American Dog Owners Association, American Kennel Club, American Veterinary Medical Association, American Veterinary Medical Association, American Working Dog Federation, Humane Society of the United States, Centers for Disease Control. All of these are professional groups that oppose breed-specific bans. So, it's almost all of them. What they do want organizations to do is to endorse education concerning enforcement of breed-neutral dangerous dog laws, dog safety education, dog owner responsibility, and detailed reporting. There are now 20 states that prohibit laws targeting specific breeds of dogs. Minnesota, California, Colorado, Connecticut, Florida, Illinois, Maine, Massachusetts, Minnesota, New Jersey, New York, Nevada, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, Texas, Virginia, Rhode Island, South Dakota of last year, Utah as of last year, Washington, Arizona as of January 1st this year. Maryland is in the process of doing this. California prohibits most brand-specific laws, with the exception, they allow breed-specific spay and neuter, which is reasonable. Other foreign countries, Ontario, Canada, Quebec, Canada, Amsterdam, Netherlands, and a quote from them, "It did not lead to any decrease in bite incidents." Italy repealed in 2009. Spain lifted their ban also. Fortunately, elected officials from coast to coast are coming to understand that breed-specific dog bans are bad policy. More than 100 cities and towns have reversed their bans of pit bulls and other breeds. And I just went over the states. And I have an article here that, from Huffington Post, which was published in 2014, and I found it quite interesting, and I will pass that around. There's pictures of the early little dogs. Anyway, and what the article talks about is the, how these dogs have saved lives. I'll give you some examples. One child had a lowered blood sugar from diabetes. The pit bull was able to smell that change in the body chemistry and run to get the mom, so that baby was saved. A woman was lost for eight hours who had dementia, and the dog was able to find that woman. There was an abusive relationship, and the dog saved the woman from that relationship. There was a protected owner from a violent home invasion because the pit bull was there, and the invasion did not occur. There was a baby that was rescued in a home fire because of the pit bull in the home, went to get the parents, ran down the hall and alerted the family. This is really interesting. It was a veteran who had PTSD, had seizures. He carried his phone in his pocket with 911 ready to dial. He had a seizure, fell on the floor. The dog got the phone out of his pocket and phoned 911. That's pretty amazing. And there was also a four-year-old, and this happened in England, saved from a fox attack. A nine-year-old boy was prevented from being abducted. A man over a fence was trying to abduct this nine-year-old boy. The pit bull was there and barked, and the man went away. I think there's enough research that shows that, that the brand, ban-specific to breeds is not, is not any longer thing. 11 years ago, when you guys made that law here, it was the trend, and I grant you that. But the trend is now going the other direction. And I would like you as elected officials to hear us out on this and consider, consider our appeal to you. Thank you very much.
Should we motion to receive and file that article too?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Is this another one?
All the same sign.
Motion to receive and file, we have another article.
We can't do it ahead of time. We could wait till the end and do them all at once, I suppose.
Hello, my name is Shannon Dunlap. I'm actually not living in Council Bluffs, I live in Carter Lake. I was the animal control officer who was able to pursue overturning the ban in Carter Lake. And I just wanted to come and share with you a little bit tonight, the kind of the process I went through. I have a copy for each of you, and what I want you to consider is, looking at those pictures, can you tell me which one is a full-bred, a full-bred pit bull? And the answer for most of you will say, you'll look at most of the pictures and say, "Most of them are." And they are not. There are so many breeds that are intermixed now that look like pit bulls. As an animal control officer, it is nearly impossible to decipher which one is a pit bull and which one is not. So, what happens is animal control officers have to go into homes, remove animals that may look like a pit bull, but if they were to get DNA testing, may come back and say they're not a pit bull. But at the time, that's what we're required to do. How many times did I remove an animal, and then it comes back that they're not? Well, the animal was already taken to a shelter and adopted to somebody else in another city who was able to. It's just not fair to the animals, it's not fair to the families. And the main thing is, is it's, it's not realistic. How many people have pit bulls or pit bull mixes that hide them in their home? By making a ban, all we're doing is having people hide them in their homes, and then when they get caught, then it's a big uproar, okay? When we allow them, but with a lot of stipulations, then those dogs are allowed to be out and socialized, and we have a lot less chances of that dog actually biting. If they're kennelled up, if they're hushed up, if they're put away all the time, their chances of biting are much higher. With changing the ban, though, you have to really consider what else needs to go with it. In Carter Lake, I would not ever have recommended it had we not also changed the perception of how animals should be treated. They were no longer allowed to be chained up in yards for more than 20 minutes at a time. They're no longer able to be put in a yard without food or water without a certain amount of time, because the longer they're chained up, the longer that they're left alone, the higher their chances are of biting. So, if you're ever to consider this, you have to consider the whole picture, because it's not just the animal, it's how they're treated, and it is their family that raises them. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jacinda Christine, I live at 807, and I think it was perfect for me to follow up with her, because on my pit, she was born here before the ban started, and so she was kind of grandfathered in. And speaking as a responsible dog owner, I was more than happy. I was more than happy to do all of the things for her, because, as, again, it's not about the dog, it's about these responsible owners, if you raise them and take care of them. Again, spay and neutering, socialization, they've got to have proper socialization. So, as a responsible owner, we did everything we needed to, to make sure that she was a good dog. We've done it with every dog we've had. A lab, he gets the same treatment in our home as she did. She, he's going to class. And so, what it did, that I had seen, is I knew a lot of people that had pit bulls. We were responsible. We had ours licensed, she was spayed, she did everything correctly. And she was one of, I think, I think the original numbers before the ban was something in the 300 area. After the ban was in effect, 75 got reregistered. What happened to the rest of them? Did they leave? They went underground, and they're still doing, you know, what they were doing before. But they had irresponsible owners, therefore, they were not being watched, they were not being tracked, they were not being watched for their socialization and their tendency to bite. And so, I just wanted to say, like I said, I think this is a lot more about the owners, and I think that anybody who has a pit bull or any dog who is responsible would be more than willing to follow responsible, reasonable stipulations that we're asking for. Not, not to, you know, we're more than happy to follow those. And I just want to say that, like I said, as an owner, that we should be given that opportunity.
Hi, I'm Carla Burgala at 294 Harrison Street. When I was a child, granted, 40 years ago, things were a lot different. My aunt's neighbor bred dogs. Told us we can jump the fence anytime the puppies were out, play with them. I used to jump the fence all the time, lay on the ground, roll around with all these puppies, up on my face, look at me, everything else. He bred pit bulls. So, for years, I grew up going, jumping the fence, playing with all these pit bulls as they grew up. I did not realize that people perceived them as a bad breed, as a dangerous breed, until I was much older, and it still totally blew my mind. until I was much older and it still totally blew my mind from what I grew up with because anytime I've ever been bitten by a dog, it's been on a farm. You know, those were farm dogs. I don't know my breeds really well, random other dogs. But, um, you guys put the ban in effect eleven years ago, ten years ago, beginning of September. I don't know how many of you guys remember Dennis Krogan from Dennis Cycle? Riding his motorcycle down Crescent Highway? It was not pit bulls that ran out in front of his motorcycle and sent him cartwheeling down the highway. It was two other dogs. It was a dog owner that had been reprimanded before for not controlling his dogs. It is not the breed of the dog that we are having trouble with, it is the owner of the dog that we are having trouble with. Singling one out is wrong. When we see children and a little boy pushes a little girl and calls her names, we think, what does this child see in his home that he's learned this behavior? Why is our perception of a pet any different than our perception of a child? We raise our children, we raise our pets. It should not be us looking at a breed going, hey, this is dangerous because. It is us looking at somebody going, why does this dog behave well? Why does this dog behave bad? Go ahead, have them put an insurance policy on. You'll find out that pit bulls are some of the sweetest dogs ever. It is your regular little yappy things that tend to, and I have one, um, that tend to bite more than anybody else or any other dog. It is not a dog breed and I think, you know, if you wanna look back, eleven years ago, you put the ban on. Ten years ago, Dennis cartwirled down the highway. It was not a pit bull, it was a dog owner refusing to follow the rules of restraining his dog. Regulate the owners, hold them accountable, don't punish the breed.
Um, you've already had your five minutes, thank you. No, you're wrong. We've been timing it, thank you. Thank you. Five minutes, that's the rules, I'm sorry. Applies to everybody. Yes, you can.
We'll add it to the stuff. Okay.
Anybody else? Anybody from the council?
My name's Melissa Neumann and I actually live in Cass County, um, Atlantic, Iowa. And I'm here just to support my friends. Um, I had a two-page story that I was gonna read, but I'm not gonna do that because of time. But I just wanted to say that, um, my knowledge of pit bulls was very limited. It was just all from what the media said and, and hearing about dogfighting. But, um, a year and a half ago, I actually, um, uh, adopted, rescued my fourth dog and she's a pit bull. She was, uh, rescued from Topeka, Kansas. She was in an animal shelter there and she was actually their temperance dog. She had such a mild and laid-back position that they decided to, all the new admits, introduce her to, to Wendy and to see how they would react to dogs. And she contracted from one of those new admits, um, ringworm. They were a no-treat animal shelter, so she was given, she was put on death row, basically. One of the volunteers said, oh my God, there's no way you can euthanize this beautiful dog. And she fostered her and ran a story, um, in, uh, SCARS, which is, uh, animal refuge. But anyway, to make a long story short, um, I've grown up with dogs, I've been bitten by dogs by a lab, um, I've had stitches by dogs, but, uh, I had never been around pit bulls and they by far, I mean, she, they're just, they're awesome animals and, um, I just think you need to, I think we all know that it's the, not the breed, it's the animal owner or the dog handler. So, thank you for the time. I, I came all this way, so I wanted to talk.
Thank you. Somebody else was on?
Okay, um, I also would.
Name and address for the record, please.
Andrea Hall, five oh five Cell Six Street, number eight-two-eight.
Thank you.
Um, I would like to have the pit bull ban dropped. I fully believe it is the owner and not the dog. I guess it was eleven years ago, the night that you guys had the final meeting. My dog was a pit and she got hit by a car. And they kept going for a couple of minutes and they stopped and sat for like two minutes and then they just kept running going. So they killed my dog and didn't come back and apologize. I've had two of them, they were the biggest babies in the world, they would climb in your lap and just lick the heck out of you. And, um, the only time that they were, I guess, aggressive is if someone was affronting me. She would stand there and let them know, hey, you better back up. They never want to attack anybody. Like other people are saying, I'm more scared to walk in the house with a chihuahua than a pit bull because I don't want my ankles bit. So that's, I guess that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you so much. Anybody else? Anyone from the council?
I'd like to encourage everyone this evening to watch what, what many people consider to be the most anticipated presidential election, whatever your particular choice may be. And in this country, it's your right to choose. But probably the most anticipated presidential debate since then, Vice President Nixon and Senator Kennedy in nineteen sixty, their series of three debates, which by the way, if you've never seen those, YouTube has them and you get the opt to see them, they're pretty good, actually. And telling you a lot about, uh, many of the debates we still have today, um, aren't that much different than we've had historically, uh, including nineteen sixty. So I'd encourage you to, to listen, I'm sure it'll be on all of the major networks and streamed, streamed online in about nine minutes. So do your part, please, please watch and then, uh, make up your mind and vote this fall. It's, it's very important, everybody do so. So many of our citizens die for the right for us to do that. And I don't think we ought to dishonor them by not showing up and doing our part. So please, please join me in, in do our part.
Do we still have some documents to receive and file?
Oh, yes, I mean, we have two sets of documents, mercy to receive and file. So I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
I just wanted to add, uh, hopefully we won't have undue political sniping, uh, going on, uh, for the remainder of the evening. Earlier we, we heard, uh, a little bit of that. And, uh, and the mayor and I both attended a, a ceremony last week for, uh, to honor Vietnam veterans here in our, our community. And the mayor rightly noted, as, as did, uh, the president of the Vietnam Veterans Association, how, how much things have, have changed for the better for, for veterans in, in this community in, in recent times. In just the, the past several months, as a matter of fact. And, uh, and that is very right to, to note that. And, uh, I myself, uh, play a part in a number of veterans organizations, which include members of the Canesville Riders. And I also belong to the, to the Iowa Veterans Foundation, uh, which also includes members of the Canesville Riders. And, uh, and I'm sorry that, uh, that a particular member decided to come here tonight and, and, and air a feud. Uh, I think that's, that's unfortunate. But, uh, just wanted to, to let you know that things have, have improved, uh, for, for the better for, for veterans in this town. And I'm proud of the role that, uh, that not only the veterans, but the community has played in that to make that happen.
All said. Anyone else from the council?
Got six minutes.
Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you can get the protection you need from the bank you trust.
The only thing more important than knowing your money is safe is the assurance that your identity has been protected. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity-safe checking, fly-flock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves your money.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call, the local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.